At my age, I'm never happy.
All right, welcome. This is the North Andover Board of Health meeting, December 19th, 2019. I'm Dr. Frank McMillan Jr., Chairman, and I'm calling the meeting to order. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the common people which stands one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Next agenda item is the approval of the minutes which had previously been circulated for corrections.
And fatigue.
And I make a motion that they approved.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No. The ayes have it. The meeting minutes are approved. Next item is public hearings. First item is the revision to the North Andover Body Art Regulations. I believe, Stephen, you're up on this one?
So, part of the work I did was actually also putting the addendum, which was just a second document into the, I don't know why it's echoing like that, was putting it into the actual regulation, so it's one whole document. So I was just going to quickly summarize the addendum and then I could just jump into the changes with the actual regulation. So for the addendum, basically, as you can see, anything in red in the actual regs I gave you guys is from the addendum. The blue is the new stuff. The addendum, which was voted on and became effective on June 28th, 2018, basically contained a couple definitions for microblading and permanent cosmetics. And then it laid the foundation for the apprenticeship licenses. For example, who needs one, how long the apprenticeship needs to be, what kind of requirements you need for the application itself. And then, basically, it laid down some standards for licensed practitioner requirements. So, for example, the trainings and certificates you need, experience requirements, things like that. But ultimately, after we looked into some other municipalities in Massachusetts, we ended up updating some of ours based on some stuff we wanted and some stuff that we saw in other regs that we thought would just strengthen ours. So just to jump into the regulations themselves, I won't read all the definitions, but I'll touch on each one, just so you guys know which ones are new. So in the definition section, which is Section 2, we added the definitions for an apprentice, the cleaning area, communicable disease or condition. Contaminated waste was already existing, but we added to it. And then on page 3, we also added definitions for exposure, facility, light-colored linens. And then on page 5, we added the definition for trainer. And then for the actual regulations, in Section 4, for restrictions, we added to Part B, which just states that properly identified shall mean a valid photo identification of the adult and a birth certificate of a minor. For page 7, Section 5, Part A, we added on to Part 1, which just stated, "All toilet facilities and workstation sinks need to be maintained in good working order and kept clean at all times." And then we added two points after that, which are parts, or points 2 and 3, which state, "No laminate flooring is allowed in treatment areas and no acoustic ceiling tiles are allowed in treatment areas." Part 7, we just added, "All cleaning areas into areas that need at least 100-foot candles for lighting." Part 8, we just changed operator to practitioner area. Oops, sorry. Yeah, on page 7.
Page 7.
Yep.
Item 8, item 9.
Yep. So, item 9 just says, "There shall be a sharps container in each practitioner room in each cleaning area." And then, just for number 11 on that, we also added receptacles in the operator and practitioner area before it was just operator. On the following page, on page 8, for Part 17, we added in vaping to activities that are prohibited in areas where body art is performed and the fluids that can be offered to a client during or after a body art procedure have to be non-alcoholic, which brings us to the point after, which just states that no alcohol shall be served or stored on the premises. Yep.
Can you just explain the rationale for the laminate flooring? Physical plant, Section 2?
Yeah. So when I looked into it, it didn't seem like laminate flooring was 100% waterproof, to be honest. So in case we ever had any, I guess spillage or exposure incident, we didn't want any, like, blood or anything, or any bodily fluid kind of soaking into it. Guess concrete, something waterproof, you know, something that's easily cleanable as well, something that won't absorb anything. Off the top of my head, I don't have anything specific. But ceramic, yeah, tile, stuff like that. Just something that won't absorb any spillage or exposure that occurs.
Ceiling?
Well, yeah, and part of that also was that, that the material itself can create, like, dust and we don't want that to become like a contaminant if people are getting, like, work done. No, no worries. So that's all for page 8. So on page 9, under sanitation and sterilization measures and procedures, we added to Part 1 just stating, "All disinfecting slash cleaning solutions or agents shall be maintained at adequate strength to maintain effectiveness, be free of foreign material, and be available for immediate use at all times the establishment is open. Each holder of a permit to operate a body art establishment shall demonstrate through recording logs or other verifiable means that the disinfecting solutions in use maintain adequate strengths and effectiveness." For Part 3, we just added to the autoclave, which is used to sterilize equipment, that they need to have a daily log maintained to demonstrate appropriate sterilization temperatures are reached. On the following page, for Part 9, actually, on the copies you guys have, there's a part that's still in there that I removed. So on Part 9, it just says, "Use cloth, use linen and cloth items shall be stored in covered containers until laundered. Reusable cloth items shall be mechanically washed with detergent and dried after each use. The cloth shall be stored in a dry and clean environment until used. Should such items become contaminated directly or indirectly with bodily fluids, the items shall be washed in accordance with standards applicable to hospitals and medical care facilities." Originally, I had some more specifics on that, but I found a couple things on the CDC website that went against the numbers I had, at least for the temperature of 120 degrees Fahrenheit with use of chlorine disinfectant. Some of the other things on the CDC website pointed towards 135 to 145 degrees. So I figured it was adequate just to put, wash in accordance with standards applicable to hospital and medical care facilities. For Part 10, communicable and bloodborne disease, this is a new section, which we stated that establishment owners and practitioners shall be responsible for adhering to the following standards. So no practitioner shall provide any body art services or work in an establishment while having a disease or condition that has been diagnosed by a physician to be communicable, which is defined in the definition section. Then it says, "No practitioner shall diagnose or treat any suspected communicable disease or condition. Any practitioner providing body art services or working in establishment while being diagnosed with or suspected of having acquired an immunodeficiency virus and related immunodeficiency condition or hepatitis B virus shall be, shall observe and follow all current Center for Disease Control standards." On page 11, for the final...
I have a quick question about 10A.
Sure.
Is there anything that they need a letter from a physician to come back to work?
They should have one if they did have something as diagnosed with communicable, I believe. I don't know if I have anything specifically in here, but I could definitely add that.
It says it implied.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was going for, as far as that goes.
And some of the things I follow up on, so like, part of my job is like, some of the, I'll touch base with the resident and say, "Okay, you have been diagnosed with this. You can't return to work until this time," so.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Typically, it's for restaurant employees, but for this body art, I think it was definitely implied and it could be up to the establishment owner to make sure that their staff are adhering to this. Would be my initial thought.
Do restaurant owners or anybody serving food in the town, if there's any employee that has any type of communicable disease, they...
Doctors notify us when there's some sort of diagnosis. Then we follow up with the patient. Carolyn does. And one of the things we ask is, "Where do you work?"
Well, we get a lab notification, so I get a lab notification for anything that is reportable according to MDPH. So those are the ones that I typically follow up on.
Question for you guys, and I meant to talk to you about this, I forgot earlier.
No problem.
But under Section 10C, it says that, in the second and last line, hepatitis B. Do you guys think that hepatitis C would also be included in this?
Well... Hepatitis B is a blood, it's bloodborne and it can be passed by body fluids. Hepatitis C is really just almost exclusively bloodborne. I don't think you would need hepatitis C. The other thing is that people really don't carry, well, they do, but they can be cured of hepatitis C where you cannot cure hepatitis B. So we cannot cure hepatitis B and we cannot cure HIV right now, so.
That's, I meant to, this more.
I imagine that the CDC reference there probably addresses that, but I haven't looked at it. But I, I think that that's probably adequate for our purposes.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So back to page 11, number 7 just states, "In addition to a policies and procedures manual shall be provide to all, or shall be provided to all practitioners by the facility management. This requirement can be fulfilled by providing to each practitioner a copy of the North Andover Body Art Regulations. Each body art establishment permit holder and/or practitioner must carry a government-issued photo ID at all times when practicing body arts or when an establishment is open for business and must present such ID to the Board of Health Inspectors upon request." That part's pretty straightforward, just in case we do do an inspection, they are who they're supposed to be if they're a licensed practitioner. So in Part E, number 1, we added on to this. And for H, we said, "A copy of commercial biological monitoring tests." This is for establishment information for record-keeping. We also want them to keep waste taller manifests and exposure incident reports. For Part 2, and employee information, we want them to keep a photo identification, dates of employment, and any training records. And then for Part 3, for client information, it's a, that we want them to, in addition to a date of birth, include a valid photo identification.
Is that for tracing?
That's, I believe it's so if they get work done, you know what I mean, it's, they're not just giving some random name. It basically is so that when they identify themselves, it's, they, they pretty much are who they're claiming to be.
So, I'll invoke my libertarian colleague to my left. Is there, is there a public health purpose in? What is the public health purpose in this?
Client information in general, or that's specific? Item number B.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it for contact tracing in cases of exposure?
If the practitioner was then diagnosed with HEPA or something, three weeks later, they can at least trace back to who they worked on and then contact those people for follow-up. That would be my guess.
Do you really need to have a valid photo ID on record, though? Because when they're coming in, they're showing you their valid license and then you're recording all the information, so you're confirming that whatever information is there.
So I guess if you are verifying it on-site, you technically, I guess you don't have to. I can take that part out if we want to take that part out.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking from the standpoint of a customer. I just want to get a tattoo and I pay cash for it and I don't think any of this other stuff is anybody's business unless there's a compelling public health reason to have it.
How long do these records need to stay?
At least three years on-site.
I think the, I don't know, my, my own feeling is it's probably not really a valid purpose to have a photo identification. I mean, unless, unless you're opening a business, you know, tattooing illegal aliens, I don't know.
Okay, I can take that part out.
Aliens aren't illegal. People aren't illegal.
Gotcha.
So strike item number B or...
I don't know. I, I opened it up to the, to the group here for discussion.
I agree. I think, if you want to think about in the extremes of cases, you're having a license that's sitting there that somebody can steal to and have access to driver's license numbers in the extremes of circumstances, but I just don't see a particular reason.
Gotcha.
If somebody's validating it already.
In my medical practice, we used to scan driver's license just to prove that they were the person who was on the insurance card. I mean, that's, that's a different purpose. These people are, I'm sure they're paying cash.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd recommend, striking it out. I would recommend amending it to have their contact information in case there needs to be some sort of follow-up.
Right, but does the address, the name and the date of birth?
Maybe a phone number.
Maybe change it to...
Okay.
Is there an age restriction, like, with normal tattoos, like, 18, right? So is that more of the reason? Is that you want to be sure it's not a 16-year-old coming in or...
A name and a date of birth are, you know, identifying.
Right, that's, I understand that piece of it.
So, name, address, date of birth.
I was going to say, so on that idea 2, on Part H on the next page, this was already existing. It just talks about having someone under 18. Basically, they need a parent or guardian with their ID and consent, too. So I guess we could strike the valid photo identification or amend it, just so it is their contact information in case we need to get in touch with them.
I, I think, you know what, I think that that would make sense if they were consenting for somebody else, if they were consenting for a minor.
Okay.
And I would amend it to say, "And a valid photo identification if consenting for a minor."
Okay.
Was there a question from the other end of the room?
Oh, the only thing I can say is on a driver's license, it has what's called an S-number, which is their driver's license number, where you could actually track somebody down if you needed to through legal purposes if something happened, if, God forbid. So you could contact the police department, provide this picture, and say, "We need to find this person." If you couldn't locate them through their, through the address.
Good.
Just having them give us the contact information.
Well, the thing is, too, is on this, it has, if we add the consenting for a minor, that's fine, but it has the address of the client already, like, that was something that was already in our regs as some, as part of the client information, which I guess goes hand-in-hand with if we had to get in touch with them or send them a letter or something like that, so. All right. So, on, so...
Everybody okay with the amended?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, take that as unanimous.
Yep, if consenting for a minor, okay. On page 12, under the Part 5 for Exposure Control Plan, this is something new. "Each establishment shall create, update, and comply with an exposure control plan. The plan shall be submitted to the board for review so as to meet all requirements of OSHA regulations to include, but not limited to, 29 Code of Federal Regulation 1910.1030 OSHA Bloodborne Pathogen Standards is amended from time to time. A copy of the plan shall be maintained at the body art establishment at all times and shall be made available to the board upon request." So this is just something we want them to have, just like a written policy, basically, in case an exposure incident were to occur, so that they have something to follow in order to clean up after it and anything else that's needed. And it goes, they have model versions of these on the OSHA website as well. So if someone wanted to go on, basically, the OSHA website and find a plan that fits what they're doing, they can kind of just plug information in and pull it, so they don't have to come up with something just from scratch all of a sudden. So then for Section 6, Part B, we added on to that, "So a practitioner shall refuse service to any person who may be under the influence of drugs, of alcohol or drugs, or who exhibit signs of recent intravenous drug use." On the following page, on page 13, we added on to Part F, which discusses glove use. And then it just basically, it's something that I think was implied before, but we just put it in here to have it in writing, which just states that when gloves are removed during a procedure, hands should be washed and a fresh pair of gloves used. Torn or perforated gloves shall, should be removed immediately. Hands washed and fresh gloves shall be used. So on page 14, for Part K, we said, "Body pencils, pens used in body art establishments shall have the tip removed, the body and tip of the pen disinfected, and the tip sharpened to remove the exposed edge after use on a client and prior to use on another client." This is just for purposes of avoiding any sort of transmission of disease or any, anything else. And then similar, Part L, "The use of styptic pencils or alum solids to stem the flow of blood is prohibited." So part of that was, when I looked into it, I didn't really see many styptic pencils that were just single-use. They seemed to be just like a stick that, for example, if you were shaving and you were to, like, nick your neck, you could kind of use over time. Obviously, we don't want anyone stopping some flow of blood and then using that on another person. Part M, "Upon completion of tattooing, the skin shall be cleansed excluding the area around the eyes with a single-use paper product saturated with an FDA-approved antiseptic solution." And then on the bottom of the page for Part P, this goes in line with the Exposure Control Plan. It's an exposure incident report. So it's, "An exposure incident report shall be completed by the close of business day during which an exposure has or might have taken place by the involved or knowledgeable body art practitioner for every exposure incident occurring in the conduct of any body art activity. Practitioners must involve, or practitioners must inform clients of possible exposure immediately following an exposure incident and refer clients for immediate medical consultation. Records of exposure incidents shall be maintained per OSHA Bloodborne Pathogen Standards. Each exposure incident report shall contain a copy of the application and consent form for the body activity, the body art activity completed by any client or minor client involved in the exposure incident, a full description of the exposure incident, including the portion of the body art, or including the portion of the body involved therein, instruments or other equipment implicated, a copy of the body art practitioner license of the involved body art practitioner, date and time of the exposure, a copy of any medical history released to the body art establishment or body art practitioner, and information regarding any recommendation to refer to a physician or waiver to consult a physician by persons involved." So basically, this is just making sure that if an exposure incident did occur, that the report kind of has all the details of what was happening, what was affected, who was affected, that the person was given, basically, a physician's information to get in touch with so that they could get checked up on. And if they didn't want to use, want to go to that physician, that just a waiver that they were provided it, but they didn't choose to utilize it. On the following page, on Section 9, Part G, we just have that temporary body art establishments shall not be allowed in North Andover and temporary body art practitioner permits also shall not be allowed in North Andover. That kind of goes along the lines, I believe, with the mobile art body establishments, just so you can't come in, set up shop. You know, we have people here who will, obviously, trained and well-versed in doing any sort of body art procedure. So we want to just make sure that, basically, everyone who's doing it is well-experienced and versed in conducting body art activities. For Part H, we said, "Persons purchasing an existing body art establishment shall meet all requirements of a new establishment, submit a new body art establishment permit application, the permit fee, and obtain a permit prior to opening the establishment for business and comply with the Board of Health Body Art Establishment Regulation." So Section 10 is where some of the addendum stuff comes into play again. So this is a bit of a combination between stuff we added and stuff that had already been voted in and was just in a separate document. So Part B was just added to this document from the addendum. Part E, we added on to. And we just said, "For the application, application for practitioner permit, they shall include the declaration about any prior criminal records, present photo ID at the time of application, and the name and the address of the new employer." For Part F, this is really where they kind of start to combine, is where minimum training and experience requirements. So for new practitioners only, for the apprenticeship license, "No person shall practice as an apprentice any body art procedure without first obtaining an apprentice permit from the board. The annual fee for a body art practitioner apprentice shall be set by the Board of Health. An apprentice, an apprentice permit shall be an annual permit valid from the date of issuance and shall expire on December 31st of each year unless revoked sooner by the Board. The permit shall be renewed annually until the completion of the apprenticeship." "Application for an apprentice permit shall include the name, date of birth, resident address, mailing address, phone number, places of prior employment as a practitioner if any, declaration about any prior criminal record, present photo ID at the time of the application, name and address of the approved trainer, and a signed letter of acceptance from the trainer, just basically stating that they agree to take on the apprentice and have them work under them, proof of all pre-apprentice training requirements, copy of informed consent documentation to be used as documentation of the number and types of procedures performed." So the informed consent is something I believe everyone does regardless of it being an apprentice or not. So this one would just basically be altered a little bit, so it does reflect that it is an apprentice who may be doing the work and that the client who's having the work done consents to having it done by an apprentice with supervision, obviously, from the trainer. So D through I in this section, we're already in the addendum. So I'm not going to go through those ones individually, but I will go through J, which just dives into Training for All Apprentices. And so Training for All Apprenticeships shall be approved by the board and at a minimum shall include evidence of successfully completing the following procedures during the apprenticeship period. So client consultation, a client health form, client disclosure form, client preparation, the client informed consent forms, sanitation and safety precautions, implement selection and use, proper use of equipment. And on the next page, material selection and use, needles, pigments, machine, and related to machine construction, adjustment, and power supplies, and then art, drawing, and portfolio. So basically, with that section, we just want to make sure that if someone is apprenticing under a trainer in North Andover, that they're getting a well-rounded training and that they're well-versed in all different areas of performing body art. And then from the rest of page 19 to midway through 21, all of those portions are from the addendum as well, which are just basically requirements we require for all practitioners in North Andover. And on the bottom of, or midway, I should say, for page 21, "Part G is just a demonstration of proficiency for our body art apprentices. So after the initial apprenticeship year, all body art apprentices are eligible to apply for a body art practitioner permit under the following conditions. So the approved trainer will submit a statement that the apprentice is able to perform all allowable procedures as defined in Section 4 or submits a statement that the apprentice is unable to perform a defined type of procedure without active supervision. Included in this statement will be documentation of types and numbers of procedures performed by the apprentice during the training period. And then after being granted a body art practitioner permit, the apprentice will be able to become a fully licensed body art practitioner and perform all allowable procedures for pay. And informed consent forms provided to clients shall be kept on file at the body art establishment and provided to the board as request, as requested as proof of the type and number of body art procedures performed." So basically, once they complete the apprenticeship, they're able to become a licensed body art practitioner and they don't need to be supervised by a trainer constantly. And just they have to keep the informed consent forms that they give to clients when they perform on body art practice, body art procedures on them as a apprentice, keep those on record just so we know that they did receive the training they needed. For Section H, or Part H, I should say, "Application for a full permit. So upon completion of the required apprenticeship period, the approved trainer must submit a statement to the board recommending full practitioner status." a statement to the board recommending full practitioner status. All components of section ten will be applicable for this application, and informed consent forms provided to client shall be kept on file at the body art establishment and provided to the board as requested as proof of the number and type of procedures performed during the apprenticeship period. So that just goes hand in hand with, with part G. On the following page, on page twenty-two for J, this is something we added as well for trainer standards, because we didn't, I don't think we had any before. So trainer standards, the trainer must apply to the board prior to accepting an apprentice. And at the time of the application, requirements include, the trainer must demonstrate licensure for a minimum of the most recent two consecutive years with no documented violations. Trainers are responsible for developing and maintaining a log of hours worked and actions performed by the apprentice. A blank copy of the log will be provided at the time of the application, and trainers shall develop an informed consent form that includes a statement that the procedure is being performed by an apprentice. A copy of this form will be provided at the time of the application. The trainers assume responsibility for the apprentice throughout the training period. It is the trainer's responsibility to ensure all procedures and practices are conducted in compliance with all applicable codes. Trainers are responsible for providing the health department with all necessary paperwork at the end of the apprenticeship, for example, the informed consent forms that the apprentice may use. If we need a copy of those, they are responsible for handing those in. Each trainer may have no more than one apprentice at any given time. During the initial training period, the trainer's permit shall be held responsible for any complaints lodged against the apprentice. Apprenticeship program approval shall be based on departmental approval of curriculum proposed by the trainer. All trainers must maintain an ongoing and up-to-date log of the apprentice, apprentices' training, hours logged in each required activity, trainer comments on apprentice performance and learning, and signatures of both the trainer and the apprentice. And the trainers must provide a certificate of insurance demonstrating coverage for the apprentice. So basically, we just want to make sure that, one, if someone is to take on an apprentice, that they have a good history of performing body art procedures, and that they do develop a, basically, a curriculum for the apprentice, and it's not just something where they're just kind of going off the cuff and just training them as people come in. They do have something set where they want people to work on this certain item for this long, and it allows them to give comments too, so if they need work on certain things, they can jot that down and pass that in, basically. And then there's no other parts except for the bottom of page twenty-four, which are two sections we just added. So there's fines for violations. So the fine for violation of any provision of these rules and regulations shall be up to $1,000 per offense. Each day that a violation continues shall be deemed to be a separate offense, and the board may seek, may seek injunctive relief in response to any violation. And then the non-criminal disposition, which is the last section. So in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter forty, Section twenty-one D, whoever violates any provision of these rules and regulations may be penalized by non-criminal And then the final page is, obviously, if you guys want to sign in what we just went over into place, we can. And if there are any other comments, you can definitely feel free to let me know.
Comments?
Sure.
I was able to get my hands on this with perhaps some minor changes a day or two ago. So I have gone over it in some detail. And for those that just may be tuning in right now, basically, what we're talking about is an update to the regulations for, for body art. And the update, well, we go back to 2005 on this regulation. And the update includes addendums that we made like a year or so ago. In addition to that, it also includes CDC standards and so forth. Twenty-three pages. However, it's very well-written. It's easy to understand. At this particular time, we're talking about just, just perhaps one minor change to it as noted in the middle of your presentation. And after that, perhaps we'll make a recommendation for motion to accept it. Further comments?
Well, second your motion. You can second it, we can discuss it. So, I mean, thank you, it's, it's a lot of work there.
Good job.
I appreciate it.
Real good job.
How, how many people, I'm just curious, whole body art authorization in town?
Right now, only four.
Yeah, not too, too many.
But there are more coming.
Okay.
Yep. It's definitely something that's kind of been getting more and more popular.
Yeah.
I believe.
I mean, these are really very tight regulations with a lot of, a lot of things that somebody who wants to do that sort of work would have to do. It's not simply like, you know, if you're, want to open up a barber shop, you get a license from the state, you get a permit from the town, you open it up, and you run it accordingly. It seems, for somebody who, like, wants to be an esthetician, for example, it almost seems like it'd be a little bit prohibitive for them to get into the business of body art if they wanted to expand their practice.
Yeah, well, we don't mean to make it like non-inclusive, you know? We, we do want to make sure that if someone is operating with some sort of like semi-permanent or permanent makeup, like you are working on people's skin, people's bodies. So we do want to make sure that, for example, with the apprentice stuff, like you have been properly trained, and we kind of know what you have been trained in and what you may need work in, which is what the comments from the trainer are allowed, and that the people training, you do have the proper experience to be providing that kind of guidance. So we, I was trying to keep that in mind. I wasn't trying to be like too overbearing, but...
No, and I don't, I don't think that that was the intention. I guess, I guess I, my follow-up question would be is where are we as far as our regulation compared to others in cities, and other cities and towns of similar character?
So from some of the places I looked at, I was mainly looking for places who had either things we were looking for, or, once I read through the regulations, things we could use. I'd say these are probably a little bit more strict than other places. I know there were some places, like I did, I did look at Havil's, for example, I think, and I think even before some of these changes, we were a little stricter. But I don't think it's like to a point where it would be, like I said, like over, overbearing, I guess.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the regulation with the inclusion of the addendum that we discussed. Is there any further discussion on that, not that addendum, that amendment that we made?
Just, just one other thing here.
Yeah.
I, I agree with what, what Steve had to say. Yeah, it is inclusive, but there's nothing here that's prohibitively expensive or onerous. And it's put together primarily to, to protect people's health and safety. So as such, I certainly don't have a problem with it at all.
I appreciate that.
So the motion is to accept one minor change as we see at this particular time on page eleven. Client information, date of birth, invalid photo identification, if consenting for a minor. I don't see anything else at this particular time, or if at all.
All right. Why don't we do this? Why don't we take two votes? We'll take a vote on making that change. So all in favor of making the change that we had previously discussed, adding the words in, on page eleven.
Of consenting.
If consenting for a minor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Hearing none, it's unanimous. All right. And then, now the amended body art regulation, and I believe we have a motion to adopt it, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion on adopting the regulation that we just amended? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. So the regulation is adopted, and it'll go into effect on January first. That's what it says here. I think what we can do is we can sign the signature page. We will need the amended language reflected on page eleven, please.
Sure.
All right. Nice work.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing it, because I said, I said, Brian, months ago, yeah, I'll help with this. And I'm saying, but what am I getting myself into? I don't have time to do all these things, so good work.
Felt the same way for a little bit. Yeah.
Disappointed the camp regulations are not twenty pages.
I know, I'm like, mine are twenty pages shorter.
The state has really good camp regulations.
So next item on the public hearing is the revision to the North Andover camp regulation, and we'll let Caroline start that discussion.
So thank you for letting me do this today. I know we have a lot going on, but typically, the camps start kind of their process. I know some already have their application, or their registrations out, and people, encouraging people to register. So it's helpful to have this kind of up and running for January. So basically, the first regulations were done in 2005, I think, and the state just updated theirs in 2018. So with that being said, the first section of the old regulations was really not applicable anymore because it is now in the new state regulations, so it's been removed from the town regulations. So that means in the new town regulations, the new section one is timing of paperwork submission. What we changed here was we upped the deadline from May first to April first for all the camp paperwork to be submitted. The reason for that is when they submit their binder, it's not just an application, it's all the policies, procedures. It's a very extensive binder with everything that has to be reviewed. So when all the camps kind of give that to me, May first, it's, I have a little more than a month to go over, over everything. When you throw a new camp into that scenario, you're, it's just not enough time. Last year, I had a new camp coming in, and it was hand-holding the entire time, so a lot, some camps do get their paperwork in a little bit sooner, so I can start on that, but it's just, it wasn't enough time to, when camps are starting mid-June. The other thing was to, hold on, I'm trying to read here. Oh, we just added some language to basically show that if an organization is looking to run a vacation camp, we had to put a deadline in there as terms of when they need to submit their paperwork for. So if they're going to run December, February, April vacations, they need to get their paperwork in a few months beforehand, so we can review that in time. Section one also has, it just goes into detail as to what a application entails. Some people were just handing in the paper application with the permit fee, but they weren't including their policies and procedures. And so it's just to clarify that when they submit their application, all of the policies and procedures for their camps also need to be submitted. So it was just language that wasn't understood on, to everyone. Section, or item C on section one, the only thing we changed on that was that initially, it was one week prior to the first day of camp, all of the campers and staff's physicals, health records, and immunizations needed to be submitted, or needed to be ready for review. So that means a week before camp starts, I go in and review, depending on how large the camp is, at least thirty percent. If it's a smaller camp, it's a hundred percent. So some of our camps run eight hundred campers, so that's a lot to review in a week's time. And then if stuff's missing, you're not really giving families or staff enough, you know, time to kind of circle back and get another MMR or get whatever records they need. So that was the reason for bumping that up to two weeks prior to the first day of the camp start season. So if camp starts June 24th, but your camper isn't going till July 10th, you still need to submit it in, in June, just so the camp has all of the documentation as well. Item D was, so one of the issues we had this year was that we had a camp coming from out of state that they had a lot of out-of-country and out-of-state staff members who did not have any background checks done in time. All they had were quarries and sorries done, and that is only good if you have ever been a resident or worked in Massachusetts. So if you are a New Hampshire resident or Pennsylvania, a quarry's not going to show anything other than Massachusetts. So they didn't have any of their background checks in, so it delayed the camp opening on time. So it's just language saying that those need to be ready for review, and it doesn't need to be, I don't need to look at the actual quarry, it's more of just a, you know, that it was done and is submitted, and it's been okayed on their end. Section, the new section two, required immunizations, is not much unchanged. All campers and staff under the age of eighteen need to submit a certificate. Before it said it needed to say month, day, and year, which is the same, but now pediatricians actually kind of print off a certificate, like, you know, record of all the immunizations for campers and staff older than eighteen. The language was just changed in the regulations, so I changed that and updated that in this section. It just says, the required immunization shall be in compliance with the most current department immunization schedules developed pursuant to recommendations of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. The next section was kind of something that a camp had recommended in that we have some campers and staff who may not have all of the immunizations that they are required to have, and if they kind of just want to get a quick way around it, they'll write themselves a religious exemption, which is allowable in the state of Massachusetts to say, you know, we have religious objections to getting these vaccines. So for those campers and staff with religious objections to immunizations, they shall submit at the time of application for each camp season, a written statement signed and dated by a parent or legal guardian, if the individual is a minor, stating the following. Just for record, that piece that I just read is actually already in place, and that's something that we require anyhow. And then stating the following, the general reason for such objections, to the understanding that in the event of one or more cases of a vaccine preventable or any other communicable disease present at camp, all susceptible children, including those with religious exemptions, are subject to exclusion as described in 105 CMR 300, reportable diseases in isolation and quarantine, quarantine requirements, and three, that the individual is in good health. Those are kind of taken out of the state regulations and just clarified here under the required immunizations. Section, and there's a typo there, it's actually section three, not four, healthcare staff to be provided is basically states, in addition to the requirements set forth in 105 CMR 430, 159, of the current minimum standards of recreational camps for children, it is further required that the designated healthcare supervisor for residential or sports camps, regardless of the total number of staff and campers, be, one, a nurse registered to practice in the Commonwealth, two, a physician licensed to protect, practice in the Commonwealth, three, a certified nurse practitioner or physician assistant licensed to practice in the Commonwealth, or four, a Massachusetts licensed practical nurse. So the reason this was added was, right now, the way camps work is they have a healthcare consultant who's a Massachusetts State, Massachusetts licensed provider, who, under them, you have the healthcare supervisor, so the healthcare supervisor's who's on site at the camp. The state regulations currently say that it does not need to be a nurse, it can be someone who is certified in CPR and first aid, who has taken like an Epi administration course and oral administration of meds course. However, the problem that we have run into in years past is that we have had a overnight camp, which is also a sports camp, run a little bit under a hundred and fifty people, and so they technically do not need to have a nurse as the healthcare supervisor. So we had campers who had seizure medications that were required to be administered by a medical professional. So we had campers who had seizure medications that were required to be administered by a medical professional. So they were toying with the idea of not allowing the kid to go to camp because they didn't have a nurse on staff. Then, you know, the parents were saying, well, no, we want the kid to go, so, you know, let's send, you know, so it just ended up being more complicated, and then you run into a situation where you're denying access to camp for, you know, certain children with medical...
Should we word this differently, rather than where it says regardless of the total number of staff and campers? B, should it be one of, one of the following, rather than putting or in line, at the end of line three? Because when you read it, initially, before you get to line three, it looks like you have to have all of these people.
Okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
So be one of the following.
Okay.
And then define, I think you need to define what a physician licensed to practice in the Commonwealth is as being an M.D. or a D.O. as opposed to a doctor of naturopathy who also call themselves physicians? Would you want a naturopath who is going to use botanicals to be the medical director of a camp?
Yeah, so that's actually, that, the one, two, three, four is actually taken right out of the state regulations. So I was just clarifying the point of it, you know, it, that to us, it doesn't matter if your camp is less than a hundred and fifty, if you're a sports or a, you know, overnight camp, that, you know, if your child, they had kids with fifteen meds on a daily basis. And they had, you know, a nurse, a non-nurse or medical professional who was giving all these meds had no, you know, indication what they were for and, you know, side effects and that kind of stuff. So that was, you know, the reason. But I can clarify that on that piece.
I mean, I think I would just, you know, just simply add the words after B, one of the following, and then a physician and put in parentheticals, M.D./D.O.
Okay.
Close parentheses, just to make it clear.
Okay.
Yeah, I flagged this section two when I was reading it earlier today. What is the smallest size camp that we have?
So based on the current camps we have, we have a large range of forty-something campers to eight hundred campers. We have small camps that run for a week that are sports and overnight camps. And the two that we have that have been running actually have, both have nurse practitioners as their healthcare supervisors, and they're on-site. So it's been a non-issue with them. The other camp that we had an issue with, it was a person who had no medical background, who had no idea what the responsibilities were to be a healthcare supervisor, didn't know what to do with the Epi pens. Like, so it was a little bit of a disaster on many fronts. But then they had a camper coming in who had a seizure disorder and needed a medical, needed medication given by a medical professional. It specifically said that from parent. Then they had another one with multiple medications that, you know, on a regular basis, he was giving them. So that was part of the reason that we went into that. So, I mean, to answer your question, it varies depending on the camp and what they have for staff and...
Well, the reason that I ask is that the verbiage is designated healthcare supervisor, as you just defined and we clarified. That is someone that is on-site, not just affiliated with the camp, but on the camp payroll?
Yes, yeah, that is, they are on-site.
What does on-site mean, forty hours a week or?
So they have to be, so if it's an overnight camp, they have to be on-site at all times, basically.
At all times?
Yeah, so if it's an overnight camp for day camp, they have to be on-site during day camp hours.
Day camp hours or twenty-four hours a day?
So for day camp, if, if the, yeah, that's the state regulation.
Yeah, so it's the state regulation.
Okay. But maybe it's a little bit overkill, but if it's state regulation, then so be it.
Yeah, that's the state regulation, yeah. So, I mean, so if you have a camp, a day camp that runs from eight to four, you have to have a nurse on-site. I mean, technically, it doesn't have to be a nurse, it could be the healthcare supervisor. But they need to be on-site, so if someone gets hurt or someone, you know, needs medical attention, there's someone there. The overnight camp is because their emergencies happen in the middle of the night as well. So there needs to be someone designated, and that's the state, that's not us.
You know, this came up a few years ago, and we had the hockey, the hockey camp. And he wanted to call it a camp, but we said, you probably want to call it a clinic. And it really had to do with, I mean, it was a, it was a, it was a clinic for, for goalies. And they would have people taking slap shots at the kid, you know, all day long and learning how to keep the slap shots out of the net. But, you know, I think that, you know, in order to be a camp, you know, there's a considerable regulation. And if you don't call it a camp, if you call it a clinic, you could do it without doing a lot of this stuff.
Well, if you, if it needs the criteria in terms of the days. So like if your, if your camp or clinic is three days long, it's not considered a camp. If it's five days long but two hours each day, it's not considered a camp. If it's five days long and three hours, it's a camp. So if it's four days, it's a camp. So it's, yeah, so there's some things that, yeah.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot to know.
Yes. Gets a little complicated.
But I need to clarify that.
Yeah, so the reason I put in the total number of staff and campers is because the regulations say for camps with a hundred and fifty or more. And then the last was just the fees and fines. Camps will be responsible to submit a permit fee for each camp session at the time of application. Permit fees will be the, be per the current fee schedule. There was some confusion whether or not the permit fee was for the whole camp or per session. So we had people paying, you know, our permit fee right now is fifty dollars. We had some people paying fifty dollars for their one-week camp and then fifty dollars for their four-week camp. And so we had to kind of just clarify, so, because every year, it seems like we're kind of reinforcing that. And item B, any camp that fails to comply in any way with the North Andover Board of Health recreational camps for children regulations shall be subject to a fine of a hundred per offense each day that a violation continues shall be deemed to be a separate offense. And item C, any camp that requires a reinspection due to a violation of either the North Andover Board of Health Recreation Camps for Children regulations or the one oh five CMR four thirty of the current minimum standards for recreational camps for children shall incur an additional fee per the current fee schedule. So that was kind of already in there regarding the reinspection. It did say that they would incur an additional fee per the current fee schedule. The item B that I added was because we didn't have anything in place in terms of fines. We had a camp that was refusing to put into place and do certain things regarding their background checks and made a statement, oh, we'll just open up in any ways and pay the fee. And so I was like, we don't even have a fee, so, or a fine. And the ones per, in the state regulations, it gets a little complicated. It's not as simple as it states in the regulations on their end. You have to kind of go to court. So it was recommended we put language in there for the fines.
It's a great presentation, thank you.
So change you're talking about making, section four will be three, five, the first five will be four. And also in section three, before, there was the outline of designated healthcare supervisors, what they are. You're going to change the verbiage to something like, shall be one of the following or whatever.
After the word B, add the words, one of the following, colon, and then strike or in the third. And those changes that you suggested, if there's no objection, I think we can just take those as editorial changes without, without voting them.
And then adding M.D., D.O.
Yeah, the M.D., D.O., just, just after physician, so it's clear that, you know, this does not apply to a naturopath.
Good work.
Just great work. Very further discussion, I'll accept a motion to adopt the revised regulations as distributed.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous, there are unanimous vote to adopt. So I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I make the motion to close the public hearing.
Well, second.
All in favor of closing, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, the public hearing is now closed, that business is accomplished. Is there any old business? Seeing nobody at the microphone, we will now move to new business. We have the twenty-twenty Board of Health meeting schedule that's been distributed. And the schedule is the first, I'm sorry, the fourth Thursday of the month, except in the months of November and December. I think, we didn't change any other dates, did we? Sometimes we have historically moved dates when they conflict with school vacation. I don't see any here. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will take a vote on accepting the twenty-twenty Board of Health meeting schedule, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. It's adopted. The second one is the emergency call list, that is for information. This is an updated list with everybody here, just look at your own, make sure it's correct. Are there any corrections? Being none, we will move on to the next item, the Thompson Brothers Industry. I'll let, I'll let our esteemed health director speak to that.
Thank you. So I spoke to Jeff Thompson, just followed up with the temporary operating approval you guys had allowed me to issue, since we didn't have the last meeting. So he's working away, they are finishing up every day, and the site is clean by the end of the day. So they are accepting material and doing what they said they were going to do. They are definitely happy with the one-year temporary approval. They are well on their way to getting a new site designed, or new building designed. And they're researching all the new technologies right now, and they seem to be doing a really good job. So they're very thankful for the support of the board and the ability to open and start their temporary operations.
New building, new design. What are they talking about, going back online?
He's still looking and talking to architects now and looking at the technologies. I said, is the one-year temporary approval long enough? He says he hopes so, but he has no definite timeline at this point.
He can come back to us if he needs it extended.
And that's exactly what I said.
I just didn't want to give him a blanket approval to operate a temporary.
And that's what I explained to him, said, if this isn't enough time, come back, we can talk it, talk about it at a later date. But he's extremely happy, they're back up and running, obviously at a portion of their previous capacity. But at least they're collecting revenue and able to move forward and stay in business.
I don't think that there would be any objection to approving an extension if it was needed. I just wanted to make sure that we had a say in it.
Yeah.
So...
So that's that, so, yeah.
Good. Any other communication announcements or discussions?
Nothing that I have, just, these are the two big items tonight. You guys did a great job working on these, getting these things pulled together for you.
Fantastic job, thank you. The town appreciates it, your board appreciates it. All right. If there's no further business, we'll move to adjournment.
Make the motion that we adjourn.
Well, second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, we're adjourned.